Standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Pastor Jones.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. We know that your name is excellent because you have given us city leaders and city officials who lead with care. We know that your name is excellent because you grant us those in governance who do your work and your will. Our prayer this day, Lord, is that they will do just that, that they will lead with kindness and with a decision that's always based upon what you say. Calls them to hear the word which comes from your writ, that he that ruleth over men must be, must rule in the fear of God. Calls this to be a place of cooperation and conciliation, but never compromising in doing your will. Blessed then this meeting, oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance certified by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll? Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
The motion is dispensed with the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. My colleagues and I are delighted that you are here. For those of you who do not regularly attend the council meetings, the procedures we will follow tonight is follows. First, we'll take up ceremonial items. We have two. Then we'll move into the public hearings, and then we'll take up the regular agenda items in order that they appear on the docket. Upon completion of the agenda, we'll move into the new business before the council. Those of you who want to address the council, you should have signed up prior to 7:00 PM tonight outside of the chamber with the clerk. When your name is called, please come forward, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Again, thank you for being here. Mr. Clerk, we have two ceremonial items.
Yes, sir.
First, we have Ed Lazaran of the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library. Mr. Lazaran, please come forward to the podium. He's here to tell us about the Friends of the Library Week.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Mayor Alexander, members of the city council. I'm Edward Lazaran. I'm here tonight representing the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library. We want to thank you all for your past and ongoing and future support for the library, their programs, and their initiatives. They provide one of the most valuable services our city has to offer citizens of all ages. Our Friends Organization has also supported the library since 1956. That's six decades. And one of our most important projects is funding for summer reading programs. So I'd like to give you a quick update on the summer reading program. Studies show that children who don't read during the summer can lose up to two months of learning ability by the time they return to school. So if you imagine the cost of these children coming back into the classroom and taking the first two months of their school year just to get caught up to where they were when they left the summer, you can see how important this program is. For many of our students, the Norfolk Public Library is the only place that they can get books to read during the summer months. So the library bridges this gap as it promotes literacy and lifetime learning through summer reading programs. And there are programs for adults as well. Norfolk Public Library celebrated their six weeks of summer reading with a theme this summer, Read for the Win. More than 4,400 young people read for nearly three-quarters of a million minutes, earning prizes for their efforts. Here are some of the big prize winners. We have a nice, lots of pictures of programs and activities at all the libraries all through the summer. Students logged reading time through participation at Norfolk Public Libraries, Norfolk Public Schools, and Parks and Recreation and Open Space Facilities. More than 14,600 youth, and that's an increase of over 18% over last year, attended the 492 special programs that were held at Slover Library and the branches throughout the city. Performers at these events are funded by the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library, not by the operating budget. Of special note this year is the partnership between the library and Norfolk Public Schools, which filled the summer gap in school lunches by providing daytime meals at Slover and five of the branches. So a total of 5,378 meals were served, including 718 breakfasts at Slover and 4,660 lunches at all six locations combined. Equally important, 744 new books donated by National Literacy Advocate, the Soho Center, were given to the children who attended these programs. For many of these children, this may be the very first book that they have ever owned. And I, you can imagine the power, the powerful feeling for a child of six years old to get their very first book that they can take home with them. Next week marks the 11th Annual National Friends of the Library Week. Our objective going forward this year is to expand awareness of the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library and increase our membership throughout the city. We are working to become more active and visible to the public at each and every branch so that everyone will want to become a friend of the public library. As part of the Friends Week celebrations, award-winning author and naturalist Cy Montgomery will speak at Slover Library on Wednesday, October 19th, at 7:00 PM. It'll be an exciting evening, hearing about her adventures interacting with earth's creatures, including gorillas, snow leopards, tree kangaroos, and most recently swimming with octopuses. We hope that you will be able to join us for this free event and come to our membership reception at 6 o'clock that evening. The Friends would like to commend the public library staff once again for their success in engaging the students of our city in a fun-filled summer of reading, learning, cultural enrichment, and full stomachs. As a token of our thanks to the council, the Friends would like you to be the very first to receive our brand-new bookmarks, and hope that you will join us next week and all year at our wonderful Norfolk Public Libraries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. This is the National Fire Prevention Week. We do have our chief, Chief Wise, from our Fire and Rescue, joined by Battalion Chief Julian Williamson. Will you please come forward? Chief, we have prepared a proclamation. It reads, "Whereas the city of Norfolk is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and visitors, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas the United States Fire Department responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, which is 84% of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes where smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working, and whereas many Americans do not know how old the smoke alarms are in their homes, or how often they need it to be replaced. And whereas the Norfolk Fire Rescue is dedicated to the safety of all life and property from the devastation effects of fire, whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarms. Now for, be it resolved, I, Kenneth C. Alexander, Mayor of the State of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9 through 15, 2016, as the Fire Prevention Week. In the city of Norfolk, and I call upon its citizens to participate in the fire prevention activities at home, work, and school, and to, don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years." Chief? Here's the proclamation, and please...
Mayor, members of council, thank you for this acknowledgement. It certainly helps us to get our message out of safety. If I may, I just have a few quick remarks. First, I want to introduce to my left here Battalion Chief Julian Williamson. He's our Public Information Officer and supervises the public education efforts within the department. And Captain Jim Bailey, the folks here that I'm going to release real soon and get them back to work. He's going to introduce his crew. They're from Station 8. They respond in the south side, in the downtown area, and we just wanted to have him, them here this evening. Captain Bailey, would you introduce your crew?
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name's Captain Bailey. We have Michael Say, firefighter, firefighter Damonte Ward, and firefighter original Shirley. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
The theme with Fire Prevention Week has been a three-year-long theme nationally, which has been dedicated with a focus towards the smoke alarms. And what we are doing here in Norfolk, we are midway through a three-year goal of knocking on every door in the city of Norfolk to offer every resident a free smoke alarm. And that project has been a tremendous success. Whenever possible, our crews ride on Saturdays and Sundays knocking on doors, offering that free smoke alarm. And I would say that there is some education needed for people to understand how to make sure that they have an alarm that is working. And we come out, if you call Norfolk Cares for the folks that are watching, or go to the website, we will, you ask us to come, we will send a fire truck to your door, and we'll make sure that your smoke alarm is installed properly, that it's working. If it needs batteries, we'll put batteries in. If you need a new alarm, we'll put a new alarm in. And so it is something that is vitally critical in the protection of life should there be a fire. So thank you for helping us get that message out.
Thank you, Chief, all that you do.
I think I'll take this.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we ready? Uh, yes, sir. PH one? We have one procedural matter, Mr. Mayor, the need to certify the closed meeting. So I have a resolution for that.
Apologize.
And that is a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH one? Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance to Kyle and Letitia Nickerson of a certain nonconforming lot located at 860 Washington Avenue. There's no one scheduled to speak. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Okay, I have an ordinance authorized of the conveyance to Kyle and Letitia Nickerson of a certain nonconforming lot located at 860 Washington Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH two? Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on a lease agreement with Copy Connection LLC for the lease of city-owned property located in the Main Street Parking Garage Complex and known as 236 East Main Street. And I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Copy Connection for the lease of city-owned property in the Main Street Parking Garage Complex known as 236 East Main Street, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R one? R one is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Collector Norfolk on property located at 2409 Fawn Street. And by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission had recommended approval. Ron Meadows is here to answer any questions.
Ask Lenny if he would, uh, his results from meeting. Is Lenny here?
Ms. Newcomb, you're being summoned by Mr. Riddick. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, hey, Lenny, you met with the churches in the area?
Yes, we did.
And what did you come up with?
The churches had no stated opposition to it. The hours of operation are until 10.
Okay.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's limited in size. It's got a parking relationship with one of the churches nearby, and the ministers, I think, were very acceptable and receptive to it. The young people that are operating this have a second business that they operate in the same facility, and that is producing music for churches.
Okay.
And helping churches throughout the entire area get their music program, get the instruments, and produce music for their services.
All right. Thank you.
It went well.
Thanks.
All right, Lionel Sue Presley.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
My name is Lionel Mae Presley, and I reside at 2833 Villa Circle. I wanted to come before you tonight to share my support from the Villa Heights Civic League for the Collectors Norfolk. They are new business, they are young people. I've had some discussion with them about when they are hiring people, that they consider hiring some of the people in our neighborhood. So we just wanted you to know that we are in support of their special exception. And they have little impact on the community as a whole with their hours and where they're parking and things like that. Where the building is, is on the end of the industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that's all, who have registered to speak, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
President Presley, I want to say thank you as president of the Villa Heights Civic League, and your membership. And Mr. Newcomb, where did he go? Thank you for working with the community, the local businesses, the churches, the civic leagues, to get everybody's input on this. It's greatly appreciated. Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
I share the thanks. Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R two? An ordinance approving a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement with Mobileite LLC. There's, Mr. Norwood is here to answer any questions, as well as Mrs. Elizabeth Williams, if there are any questions from the council. Yes, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city councils of honor and privilege who appear before you tonight. My name is Robert Norwood.
And I'm Elizabeth Williams.
Elizabeth Williams. We're both from 3475 Piedmont Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, 30305. And we are here to do the best we can with regard to responding to any questions you may have.
Thank you, in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Norwood and Ms. Williams, for reaching out to city council to ensure that all of our questions were answered involving your telecommunications franchise. So much success to you. Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R three? An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Wingstop on property located at 520 West 21st Street, Unit D1. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. No one's registered to speak. Mr. Clerk, you can call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R four? An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Appleby's Neighborhood Grill and Bar on property located at 725 East Little Creek Road, Building 3, Unit 501. By 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. There's no one scheduled to speak. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R five? An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an automobile sales and service establishment named A&amp;S Enterprises on property located at 5139 East Virginia Beach Boulevard, and by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Andre Riddick is here to answer any questions, if we have any.
What part of Virginia Beach Boulevard is that, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Riddick, please come forward.
Oh, you don't, Andre Riddick, 349?
The question was...
It's on the corner of Jet Street and Virginia Beach Boulevard.
Okay.
Used to be a commercial fueling station.
Yeah, okay.
Little gas station. And the site plan that's been worked out with him has landscaping going in on all four sides of it. We've got the location of the cars that are fixed in the back of it. There's going to be a secured fenced area for automobiles that are not quite on the front for sale yet.
So it's for sales and service, huh?
Yes. That's the title we use, Automobile Sales and Service. The idea is that they can service the cars that they sell.
Right.
And that's what he can do. He's not there to service cars other than those that are being offered for sale.
Mr. Smigel?
Is there a sidewalk in front of this property?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Is there an opportunity, Lenny may know where I'm going with this, for cars to be pulled up, blocking the sidewalk?
No.
There will be a scrub line between the sidewalk and where his actual paved surface is, and where we've identified the location on this survey, he cannot overcrow that. The planning will be in front of him.
And there's nowhere for parking cars just on the street while they're being extra cars?
This is Virginia Beach Boulevard. There's no parking on the front.
And there's nothing on the side there?
And there's not enough verge for you to do what you're concerned about.
Yeah.
So it just may occur on other parts of the city.
And just for those council members that may be wondering what I'm discussing is the problem with this, used car lots along Little Creek Road and Onshore Drive, in which the dealerships are taking advantage of extra space, and they're parking their cars everywhere, including on sidewalks, overhanging them on sidewalks and blocking them. So I'm going to start getting a little bit mean with these.
There is actually a fence on this site, and then the landscaping is going to be between the fence and sidewalk.
Is there a number, is there a limited number of automobiles?
There is. We, on our, on our site plan that we attach to this, they're, the locations are set. There's six cars down the side, there's another about a half a dozen going across the front and a little bit down the other side.
And then, and then if the, if the operator doesn't follow these guidelines, what, you can lose a special?
If he doesn't follow his guidelines, we will visit him.
Yeah.
And have a conversation about that.
Yeah.
And if it continues, then we will come back to you all and ask for revocation. You may recall, certainly you, Mr. Riddick, that we don't do that very often.
Right. I guess what concerns me, Little Creek Road used to be saturated with automobile, used car dealerships and things like that. And it was sort of, most of them were eliminated. Down the other end of Virginia Beach Boulevard, say like east of Military Highway, or actually east of Kempfville Road, we have a, you know, a high percentage of used car lots. But this is a nice-looking site, and the gentleman happens to have the right last name.
All right? Are we ready?
Front page headline.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Clerk, I think we're ready. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
It looks like that the planning department has really worked with this gentleman, all jokes aside, to make this work. I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R six? An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as New York Deli and Smoke Shop on property located at 4214 East Little Creek Road, and by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. There's no one registered to speak. Clerk, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R seven? An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund in the amount of $4,775.31 plus interest at LWN Panda LLC based on overpayment of business personal property taxes for tax year 2016. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eight? An ordinance accepting the conveyance of a permanent drain easement by Norfolk Christian Holding Academy to the city of Norfolk and authorizing the city manager to accept the easement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel? Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R nine?
A letter from the city clerk requesting use of the mace for the 32nd Annual Holidays in the City Grand Illumination Parade to be held Saturday, November 19, 2016. Motion is to approve the use of the mace. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R ten?
An ordinance permitting George P. and Brenda W. Arnold to encroach into city property at 1119 Little Bay Avenue with riprap up here and lifts. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eleven?
An ordinance permitting Wave Church to encroach into the right-of-way of College Place with an existing awning. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R thirteen?
An ordinance permitting Breast Realty LLC to encroach into the right-of-way of Granby Street with a wall sign and temporary planter. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R thirteen?
An ordinance permitting Breast Realty LLC to encroach into the right-of-way of Granby Street with a wall sign and temporary planter. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R fourteen?
An ordinance permitting Athens LLC to encroach into the right-of-way of Red Gate Avenue with an extension of the existing Mansard roof. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R fifteen?
An ordinance permitting Gate House Two LLC to encroach into the rights-of-way of East 20th Street, Armstead Avenue, Monticello Avenue, and East 19th Street with various structures. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R sixteen?
An ordinance approving an agreement between the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation and the city relating to the collection and processing of approximately 845 miles of pavement data with a fully configured ARAN, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $233,305 from funds heretofore appropriated in the city's general operating budget to cover the city's costs related to the project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R seventeen?
An ordinance granting L&amp;H Real Property LLC permission to encroach into the right-of-way at 1310 Colley Avenue, approximately 264 square feet, for the purpose of outdoor dining and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?